Please rise for the invitation by Councilman Dan C.
Let's pray. God of all creation, we thank you for this day and many blessings we have received. We thank you for the people with whom we've been in contact, our family, friends, and sorcerers. We thank you for the ability to use our minds to discern your will and work to create a strong and healthy community. We thank you for our community and all who serve. We pray that for all in our community who are hungry, unemployed, or uninsured, we pray for all in our community who are mentally at risk of ill. We pray for all in our community who live in violence. For these and all the burdens of our larger community, Lord, hear our prayers. As this meeting begins, I pray for each person here, give each person clarity of mind, creativity, compassion, due diligence, integrity, and a sense of humor. Give them listening ears and thoughtful words. Give them presence of mind and an open heart. In your holy name, pray. Amen.
I pray to the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We may have a need permanent. Invoker, everybody. That would free you up. I'm trying to have that sense of humor. It doesn't work.
Works for everybody else.
You didn't pray that we not have any smart alecs over there. We have a special guest tonight, Nick Sodowsky. He's here, he's getting his civics medal, and he's with his father Joey Sebastian. Good to have you.
He's my nephew, so don't ask me who his favorite uncle is, because he'll probably tell you somebody else other than me.
I've known him a long time, but I never claimed kids yet.
He's a good old man.
Okay. Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate y'all letting me come and talk to you tonight a little bit about Catawba Science Center. And I think about, I think everybody probably is familiar with Catawba Science Center, but we are one of the great institutions, I think, in this community. And I say that coming from outside the community and loving being here for the last six years. Many of you probably don't know how many people we serve and the importance of Catawba Science Center to this community. So I share with you that last year and typically in a year, we'll see about 130,000 visitors at Catawba Science Center. That includes approximately 53,000 school kids and teachers from over 26 counties. So we're truly drawing people in from all over the region. And then any given day, you'll see buses from Buckland County, from Wilkes County, from Aigre County, Mitchell, all these other counties coming into Catawba Science Center and the salt block. And I want to thank you also for your support of the salt block, because I know that y'all support the salt block in that facility, which indirectly helps us too, because that offsets some of our utilities and expenses. So thank you very much for that. Catawba Science Center, like many nonprofits in the community, continues to face challenges in support. About 50% of our support comes from Phil and Profit Gifts, and the other part of it mostly comes from earned income off of program revenues and admissions. So we, as we see businesses move out of the community, or if they're sold off, like IMH or somebody like that, unfortunately, sometimes we lose some of the support that we get Phil and Profit support. And most recently, we've just been notified of some of the decisions being made in the state budget. And although the state budget only represents about 7%, or has represented about 7% of our budget, it's going down, and we'll lose about 30% of that over the next two years. So there are challenges ahead. Now that said, we're going to continue to do a lot of great stuff in this community, and we are. And I wanted to share some of those things with you. I want to lead off. There on your desk, a card called Portal to Science, and I have more of these and let some of them out for anybody that wants information on this. You may know that we've had a program called Free Friday for a long time. And the intent of that program was to allow financially challenged families to have access to hands-on science experiences. We're encouraging people to get excited about science, to go into a field in science, and become productive members of our community. So the Free Friday program, as we've been going along, we found that it did get to some of those financially challenged families, but it had some problems. One is that it was only Fridays. So if you happen to have a job, how are you going to bring your kids down there? So we changed the program around to Portal to Science. And the Portal to Science program has been developed over the last year in conjunction with four different county departments of social services and also with the public health department here in Catawba County. They are partners in distributing what we're calling Portal to Science passport cards. There's a wallet card and also a key fob to up to 20,000 families in Alexander, Burke, Catawba, and Caldwell counties. So we've been going and meeting with all those DSS employees and talking to them about this program. It is truly open to financially challenged families that are certified by DSS as being on some kind of federal assistance program. And those cards allow those families to come in any day that Catawba Science Center is open. So hopefully those people have jobs and they bring their kids in on a Saturday or Sunday, or if they've got a day off, they can bring them in anytime. So the access is improved. We're working with partners and collaborating with those people that truly serve those areas. This rack card is being distributed to lots of other nonprofits in the community, and we're looking for all kinds of distribution points. So I just dropped off about 600 of them with Partners in Partnership for Children yesterday here. We've got lots of others that are going out and love to get that word out to those people. The whole concept of this is how do we get children on a pathway to science careers? They're so important for our community. Great program. Pass it over around, there's all kinds of good information on this. Anybody that wants it, let me know, we've got more of them. And as we're going out, we're not just promoting Catawba Science Center. So the other little card you see on the Hickory Museum of Art, these guys are right in the salt block with us. It's a no-brainer to support them and promote them at the same time. So as people come into DSS, they can take up both of them, they can make a day of it, whatever they want to do. Get reduced admission. This card is not free. The card, the annual card is free, but there's a $1 per person to come to Catawba Science Center rather than $6 for a child and $8 for an adult. Really affordable, but we wanted them to think about their visit when they came and said, let's spend some time there, we're going to spend $3 or $4, whatever the family size is. This is free, and there's some great exhibits over at the art museum, so go see those, too. Anybody who doesn't know there's stuff in Hickory, you're just burying your head somewhere. I don't know where. Great stuff going on with this program, help us promote that. I also wanted to let you know just about a couple other things. Catawba Science Center, just in the past month, received a Google grant. So there are not many of those grants that are coming south of the Catawba River, Lake Hickory. They stay up in Caldwell County. The purpose of the Google grant that we just received is to promote innovation and connection to the general public about CAD design and computer design with output to 3D printers and laser cutters. We'll be doing things like teaching them programming on Arduino boards and Raspberry Pis, if you know what those things are. So we have a lot of different things that are going to be going on. The program is designed to connect businesses, local businesses, and science professionals to youth and their families. So if you know of a business that is in science, most of us are in some way or other, and you would like to figure out with us how we can create hands-on programs that excite children and get them thinking about a career path in your business, let us know. We're looking for all kinds of ideas and people to engage in and be partners with on that. Saturdays, we'll do one program a month, that's about as many as we can handle in trying to come up with stuff, but one a month. And then, for those children in grades five through eight that want to go further into some kind of computer technology or IT, we're going to create a tech club on Sundays, so they can come in and do stuff in more in depth. And it'll all be challenge-based and theme-based, and it'll be a whole lot of fun. Our first one is going to be teaching robotic stuff and how to go in and program robotics to do all kinds of little stuff. So we've got things like that going on. There are lots of other programs. I don't want to take any more of your time, but keep us in touch. We're doing great stuff in this community, and we really want to be partners with other folks out there. So thank you very much for taking time.
My wife and I had a question. We hosted a family from Brazil last week. We had been guidance counselors, advisors, whatever, for a road exchange visitor back in 97. And she returned from Brazil with her family, her parents, and her children and her husband. And they saw the lake, the crawdads, Hickory High Football, lots of other things, and her favorite thing was the science center. So I tell you, if you got grandchildren...
Thanks are coming.
You got grandchildren, take them to the science center, they'll have a ball. Well, if you youngsters, if you have children, you know, I forget, because there actually are people who have children who's got a grandchild.
I took my daughter to my grandmother there today for their science afternoon, and she had a blast.
It's really great. Thank you. No persons requested to be heard. Approval of minutes of the special meeting of September 1st?
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous, all members are pleased. Who were the minutes of regular meeting of September 1st?
This program is the mayor.
Motion by Lael, second by Zagoroli, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Any things to be removed from the consent agenda? It will be approved.
Second.
Motion by Meisner, second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Listen, talk about the paper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your only public hearing this evening tonight is to consider consolidating a performance and evaluation report, which is related to the city's community development block grant program. And I'll ask Mr. Dave Leonetti, the city's community development manager, to come to voting and present it to the council prior to the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crum. Each year, the city is required to submit a report on its community development block grant activities. This is called, as Mick pointed out, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is called the paper for short. This report details how the city spends its money, this community development money, over the course of a program year. In 2014, 2015, the city received approximately $310,000 in its annual entitlement grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It also received approximately $171,000 of program income from repayment of loans made with community development funds in previous years. This report details the city's spending for the 2014-2015 project year, which ran from July 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2015. During this time period, the city spent roughly $496,000. Exact numbers are in your packets, in case you're interested in, you know, exact numbers down to the penny. This includes some funding spent from previous years, because our budget does roll from year to year. We have a certain number, amount of time, however, that we need to spend all of our money for defense, get out of the woods. These are broken down, all of our activities are really broken down into four basic groups of kind of spending that I'm going to talk about. Housing activities, public services, infrastructure and facility improvements, and then the kind of boring part, program administration and fair housing activities. The city conducted two main housing activities during the year. $29,000 was spent on down payment assistance to first-time homebuyers. That assisted four families in achieving homeownership for the first time, or the first time since a family situation changed. Also, the city and Habitat for Humanity partnered through various programs to spend approximately $23,000 on housing rehabilitation. Five households were assisted through these programs. That number only talks about community development block grant funding spent on housing rehab. We also received money from the Housing Finance Agency of North Carolina that is not included in this report, but we, generally about 12 families a year are also helped through that program. And we have a number of families that were also approved in the springtime, prior to the end of the fiscal year, however, no money was actually spent on their cases yet. They're under construction now. The city also provided about $53,000 in grants to seven public service agencies during the fiscal year for a variety of different services. Community Reach Daycare received funding to improve their infant room. Exodus Homes received funding for an employment transportation coordinator. Safe Harbor received funding for their day shelter program. Cooperative Christian Ministry received funding for their health clinic. The Soup Kitchen received some funding to help with their kitchen staff. Alpha received money to help provide the cost of a case manager's staff. In terms of the infrastructure and facility improvement projects, really had four, four projects, three of which had significant spending during the fiscal year. The first one was the Kiwanis Park Restrooms and Picnic Shelter. That was kind of a carryover from the previous year. Basically, it finished in kind of August, so there was about $98,000 of that that was spent during the 2014-15 fiscal year. Total project cost was around $240,000, I believe, but that was spread over 1314 and 1415. About $79,000 was spent to resurface three neighborhood streets in low and moderate income areas. Seventh Avenue Southeast in the Kenworth neighborhood was resurfaced. Eighth Street Southwest in the Green Park neighborhood was resurfaced, and Third Avenue Southeast in the Ridgeview neighborhood was resurfaced during the 2014-2015 fiscal year. As you can see, if you've driven by, Optimus Park has now reopened. So Phase 1 is complete with the outdoor gym and the walking trail and drainage improvements. Approximately $141,000 of that was spent during fiscal year 1415, and the remainder of that, about $210,000 project, will be, is about to be paid during this fiscal year. So you'll see that again next year, along with Phase 2, which is about to get underway. That should be going up to bid in the next week or so. $2,700 was for the final project, and that's interior renovations at the Ridgeview Library. Those are underway. There's about $40,000 of improvements remaining. That property is actually owned by Interfaith Housing Development Corporation. The city has provided them with some loans and some grants. We worked with them through the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office to get a certified local government federal preservation grant to help do the outside. Last year, they received some donated shingles from Habitat to help do the roof. This year, we're working on the inside of the building. We've got contractors in there. I believe all of the rough-in work for the plumbing, mechanical, and electrical has been finished, and all of the framing for the, basically, it was previously kind of a U-shaped room with a office and small restroom that was not handicapped accessible in the middle. That was torn out, and they put a larger restroom and office on the south side of the building, so that you kind of have one large room, a small office, and now a restroom that's handicapped accessible. So the framing is complete, and all of the work is going to be done to the Secretary of the Interior standards, because it is a historic building. The only other spending from last year was program administration and fair housing activities, which was about $69,000, and that's less than 14% of the total spending on administration. So the entire report's in your packets. If you need any additional information, I'd be happy to answer any questions such as well. Thank you.
As is our procedure, we allow 15 minutes for people who want to speak against our proposal. 15 minutes to vote, and then we allow rebuttal and sole rebuttal, but five minutes each. With that, I'll prepare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this report. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or support? There being no one desiring to speak, I'll prepare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
I'm Mr. Crum.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Leonetti. It sounds like another year that we've accomplished a lot of good efforts and of good resources.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, department report, and last, the city's Assistant Public Services Director, Mr. Kevin Geer, to agree or to come to voting and present acceptance of the bid for place generator at the water treatment plant.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crum, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight regarding our water treatment facility emergency regular replacement project. That's a mouthful. And I'm going to apologize in advance, that sounded a little more southern and rural, because I had a head cold. Staff is requesting council set the bids for the project that was bid August the 21st. So what we've got is, originally, the project was slated for bids on August the 13th. There were only two bidders that, of course, attended the bid and offered bids to us. So therefore, since there's only two, we actually had to reject or send back all bids not open, and we re-advertised for bids on August the 21st. It was the same two bidders that came, of course, and offered bids, so there was no one new from that. Bids received were from Crowder Construction, they're out of Cary, but this office is working out of Charlotte, and it was, the lowest bid was $2,699, and then Rushy Mountain Builders in Lenoir was the second bidder at $2,880,000. The engineer's estimate for the project was just over $3 million, and that includes contingencies and the engineer's construction admin contract. So the project itself, just to give you a real quick overview here, if you go into the water plant site, this is the main intro. Here is the administration building, as you can see from 321. Right now, we have a single 1750 KW generator that's right here at this one location. What we're proposing actually is to install two generators on this other end of the basin. The park and the tennis courts are down on this side, so this actually gets back into a bank, and then, of course, the backside is wood on the backside of the plant. So we're actually proposing to split that load between two generators now versus adding one generator, and I'll explain a little more as to why we're proposing that. So the existing generator was new to us in 1986, but we actually bought it used. So it was National Guard or Army surplus of some kind that we bought in 86. We did have the generator, we had it going through when we installed it, new to us in 1993. It was installed before that, but 1993 was the dedication of the plant, so we'll call that a startmate, which puts it around 22 or 23 years old, best case, after the refurbishment. So it's even older than that, but we couldn't find a plate to actually see how old it really is. The generator itself, it was sized to only run the minimal amount of stuff. So actually, what that generator is sized for really is to pump water out of the plant. So in the event of a power failure, we can run either the raw water coming in to produce water, or we can run the finished water going out to get water to customers. We can't really do both. So that was one of the real limitations in the plant. Also, the, sorry, the project really is prompted by just that gradual mechanical failure. So we bought it, used it in 86, and we had it redone. Of course, by now, you're probably talking about a generator that's 40, maybe even 50 years old. They don't make parts for it anymore, and we've actually had two different people that we used to use for service contracts that now won't even offer a service contract to come and look at it. They'll tell us, you know, you're parking up your own tree, we really can't do anything for you. We find a couple of shady mechanics that come out there and kind of keep us going at times in our garage. We've got one guy in the garage that's really good at the old stuff, so we had him come out and actually look at it, and we just can't figure it out. So the generator engine and the power generation department. So a generator actually has two ends. The diesel engine end is the one we can still kind of work on, the power generation end we can't do anything with, just because it's old solid-state equipment that you really just can't get parts for to keep it going. So those parts are no longer available to us, and like I said, we had previously two different contractors we used to help us with that stuff. They no longer will even offer to come up and look at it for us, because they really just can't do anything for us. So one of the things that really kind of prompted it also is, since our upgrade in 1993, the progressive thought from council and staff has been that, okay, let's keep on the, not the cutting edge, we don't want to be first, but we want to be in the front pool, okay? So if you think about the plant when it was built, we had hydraulic valves, now we have electric valves. You can imagine a water plant, how many valves you have. Actually, we have 74 electric valves in that plant now, big valves, not the small ones, the big valves that actually control lines. Previously, those were hydraulic, now they're electric valves, so that's additional load. We have our sodium hypochlorite generation system. We used to use chlorine gas, and we went away from that in 2003 because of the concern of just mustard gas coming down the hill. So now we use onsite generation at the facility, which, of course, is a big power demand when it's running. And then we have expanded SCADA, so we've got a lot more points in the plant that we actually monitor to kind of understand what the process is doing and how the plant's running. So all of those add to power load. So as we were doing this project, we started thinking, okay, let's just take a chance and recalibrate and just see what all the load we really have that we need to run. On top of that, it's coupled with, this is something council could really be proud of, your regional water plant now has about 97,000 residents that we serve water to every day, day in, day out. That's homes and customers. That's not what my factory comes to Hickory, you know, so we're probably up in the 200,000 to 300,000 range when you think about people at the mall, people at the restaurants, or passersby, people at the hotels. Of course, that 97,000 does not count those folks. So your facility really has a lot of responsibility, and we take that serious. And that's why one of the things that we want to make sure we're doing is keeping everything as reliable and sustainable as possible. On top of that, of course, the generator is a permit requirement. So in our construction permit and our authorization to construct from the plant, actually having a running generator is a component of the permit, so we're required to have that. Importantly, I wanted to mention that this project is included as a part of our 1516 capital project budget. It, of course, was in our budget to be taken from water plant capital reserves. So we banked money back over the years to do upgrades at the plant and help us to expand that ability. This counts as one of those, because, again, it'll help us actually run more pieces of the plant to be more sustainable. And then again, finally, the request that we actually had is for acceptance of the bids. This is not award, this is not contract, this is just accepting the bids. That way, we can keep the contractor moving forward. The generator itself is about a nine-month lead time just on this generator, so this is going to be a long drawn-out project. Once we actually get it awarded under contract, it'll take quite a while, but this first step will help the contractor with some certainty on schedule and his workload. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that council may have.
I remember one time we had a gig, and we enlarged the plant to 32 million gallons.
Yes.
What's our capacity now?
32.
I mean, what's, how many is it exactly?
Well, we added, this time of year, of course, we start going down some. This time of year, we average, right now, we're averaging just under 12 million gallons a day. In 2000, well, from 2002 to 2005, yes, we would have been in the 15 to 17 million range. Right now, we're happy when we get to 12 to 13 million range. And that's a direct correlation to just the plumbing codes and our customers being really intelligent when it comes to us asking for conservation and water use wisely, just use what they need. Our customers really respond to that, so we're careful and sincere when we ask people to actually conserve water.
Would the new generator run by natural gas, or would it run by diesel, or how do they operate?
We designed the generator to run by diesel, because the way the state looks at it is, if you have a diesel generator, that's all you have to have. If you have natural gas, you have to have an equivalent amount of diesel fuel onsite to back up the natural gas. So we would have to have two tanks, if we will, with natural gas.
Let's see which flavor we got.
Diesel.
Very unusual.
And also, I And also, I failed to mention this, but the generators, the way they're designed now, will actually be able to run three finished pumps and three raw pumps, plus the chemical system, all the block heaters, electric valves. So we'll be able to really run the plant. When power's out and there's a power failure, we can run the plant completely. Not, okay, turn the pumps off and turn these pumps on, and we'll be able just to run the plant completely. And with two, there's redundancy, so right now, we can actually run the plant on one generator. But then, of course, if you run it on one generator for two or three days, if there's a storm or whatever, we have to shut that thing down to put fuel in, service it, whatever, we'll have the other one to run. Once we get into that 17, 18, Mr. Mizer mentioned range, then they'll take two generators. But right now, we'll be able to run off one.
So we'll have the old one there for backup?
No, sir. It wouldn't make a good paperweight right now.
It's a little long paper.
I say it would.
So we scrap it or leave it there, or would it stay on the site?
No, we'll scrap it.
You want that recycled, recycled.
Yes, and recycled.
Well, I like what you said about intelligent customers. I think people in Hickory probably are very intelligent. You look at how recycling is part of number one, recycling in the state of North Carolina. It's just the same kind of things that people pay to do.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So we need to, somebody, I'll make a motion to accept the bid by trial of construction company.
I'll say.
Motion by Ryan, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
The final department report from staff. I'll call the city's planning director, Mr. Brian Fraser, to the podium to present to council the Southwest Hickory revitalization plan, and not to steal Mr. Fraser's thunder, but just to reiterate the great job that he's done of securing federal, sorry, brownfield funds over the last several years, and this is another product from those federal grants that he's been able to get. I also, as the manager, am sensitive to the fact that tonight you will have heard from two planners and five engineers, so I've asked the engineers from AMAC and their consultants that they only have two minutes apiece in terms of your mental health. Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor, I'm members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone, and I'd say we'd kind of like to introduce our team. We have Harold Thurston here tonight from AMAC Foster and Wheeler. It used to be just AMAC, but they started buying people crazy with the amount of money we paid them for EPA grant. Harold has been our chief consultant for the brownfield grant for the past three years, has really been instrumental. He and his team have been phenomenal. We also have Clark Hicks from Hip Architecture out of Wilmington, and we also have Clark Henry of the Clarks, and he's the president of C3 Associates, and the Clarks and Harold and my staff have worked on this. So what staff is requesting tonight for the city council to accept the Southwest Hickory revitalization strategy plan for both the Southern Desk and the Ivy Weaver Cotton Mill sites. Most of us know the Ivy Weaver Cotton Mill as S&amp;W Chemical, but the residents at our workshop back in May of this year, they really want it to be called Ivy Weaver Cotton Mill, and I think some of them may have worked there. But we had a good group, and we'll get into that, but I want to thank the team and thanks to my staff. As Mr. Berry discussed, since the programs, the brownfield grant programs inception back in 2007, we've received $1 million in brownfield monies from EPA. $400,000, $800,000 of that has been brownfield assessment monies through Region Four Atlanta. $200,000 is the area-wide planning grant, which we are just getting ready to start up. In fact, my staff and I have been all week long reviewing statements for our RFQ that we sent out, so we'll be bringing that back to you soon as well. We are in the throes of closing out our three-year, $400,000 grant. Since the program's inception, we've assessed 40 sites in the city of Hickory, creating, well, helping to create in this vast public-private partnership, over 500 jobs in that time period. And as we are in the throes of closing this grant out by the end of September, we have 90 days to report back to EPA. We're actually ahead of schedule. We finished all of our assessments. A phase one and a phase two was conducted on the Southern Desk site, and it came up clean within all state and federal parameters, and as you know, now that site is under the city's ownership, under possession. The S&amp;W or Ivy Weaver site has had a phase one and phase two. It does need some remediation, but most of that remediation could probably be encapsulation by parking. A lot of that encapsulation was done over a holler, so it's not prohibitive for that site to be redeveloped. I wouldn't necessarily plant a vegetable garden on it, but we have other sites for that. Basically, in this, as part of our $400,000 grant, we can do plan redevelopments and programming for sites. And so what we did was, we put together our consulting team, you see here before you this evening, for the Southwest Hickory revitalization strategy area focusing on these two mill sites and the surrounding neighborhood. This is something that was part of our grant, was a stipulation of the grant agreement, and EPA was more than thrilled that we're doing this and we had some good public involvement. Basically, beyond those assessments that we did, and some of the cleanup plans, and even some tank remediation EPA allowed us to do, we did this redevelopment planning through C3 Associates, Hip Architecture, and AMAC Foster Wheeler. We hosted a local workshop back in May of 2015. It was well-received. We spent a lot of time reviewing the project area with the residents, and at the meeting, discussions focused on various conceptual reuse scenarios, not just for the neighborhood, but specifically for these two project sites. And with that, I will turn over to Clark Henry and we'll go through a brief power presentation, talking to you, talking to you about our findings with our citizen team and the Southwest Hickory neighborhood.
Thank you, Brian. Mayor, council, how are you this evening? Thank you for listening to me talk to you today about all this planning stuff. I heard you, sometimes Brian stuff gets referred to, and we're going to go deep into Brian territory over the next few minutes. I'm going to cover the general barstrokes of the plan and the strategy. I'm going to hand it off to Clark. It sounds like I'm talking about myself. I'm sorry about those two parts in the room. I'll hand it off to him to discuss the designs and the land use specifically. I'm going to cover the process that we use, the approach that we take, some of our findings in terms of site conditions, community identity, the outcomes of the workshop, as well as the strategy and some recommendations to overcome some of the obstacles that we've identified. And it's important to note, too, that in our approach here, we don't come into a workshop or a community like this as we know what's right for you. Really, our major job is to listen and to kind of formulate a plan that we hear from broad community involvement, and I hope I don't go backwards on these slides. I got it right. And that it's not developed in isolation. What we're doing is, we've also worked very closely, we work closely with the Brownfield Advisory Group. I don't know if there's anybody here from the BAG, as well as with City of Hickory staff, to learn about the area, the city's initiatives, and other overlapping priorities. So we kind of come in, we try to really get as far as possible, be in priority, engage in the community. Now, we didn't select this area. This was Brian and the Brownfield Advisory Group and his staff who wisely selected this area. I've been studying the last 15 years working on brownfield revitalization and have specialized in this small area planning around brownfields, and I have to commend Brian and his staff for using this brownfield money in this manner, kind of cutting edge in the world of brownfield grants. I've spent millions of dollars of EPA's brownfield grants all on assessments, and I wish that when I was working for a city, that I would have been doing what Brian is doing. So I'm very fortunate to be engaged here in Hickory doing this. It's really widely recognized now by the EPA that sites don't get developed by themselves, and communities don't get revitalized on a whole without sites being redeveloped. There's a relationship there, and that by just providing site assessments, sometimes the site doesn't get catalyzed into redevelopment. And so this is really something that, brownfield area-wide planning is the wonkiest term for it, but this area is a perfect candidate for this. We're really close to downtown. It's a gateway from Longview. We have a really strong historic character in the neighborhood, a very proud neighborhood that's been changing over the last couple of decades, but we have people who are really committed to seeing its future reflect its proud history. You have a really great connection to downtown, on the other side of the track, great bike and ped connections. It's highly visible, though we recognize that there are some significant constraints that we'll cover a little later. So let's talk a little bit of our process, we'll just kind of glance on that, and you can ask me more questions later. We do some background research. We came out here for a site visit to meet with city staff, the Brownfield Advisory Group, take a tour of the community, then we scheduled the workshop. And our idea behind the workshop, I'll get into in a minute, is to develop conceptual renderings that reflect the priorities that we're hearing from the community and from city staff and other stakeholders. But it's not enough to just have a set of pretty pictures that everybody wants to see happen. You know, the plan, as a planner, there's nothing more frustrating than creating something that collects dust on the shelf. So you really want something to be actionable. And then we summarize everything in a report that I know that you have. So this fancy graphic kind of describes our C3 Associates take on this. So we will identify what the community's priorities are and its history. We translate that into conceptual renderings, and so an important thing to keep in mind for the images that you'll see and that you've seen in the report, is that these are not specific architectural plans that we're proposing for the site. These are generally reflective of the priorities and aspirations that we've heard over this process. We'll take that, and we need to crunch it through some feasibility machinery. We need to look at income and growth rates to see how feasible this is over what kind of timeframe. And so what we've done, and then we develop, or we see gaps, or we see significant obstacles, we make recommendations for the city to proactively tackle those. And that's all summarized in your report. You know, we're going to glance through a couple of these, except they're a bit redundant. So May 14th, we convened at the Westmont Community Center, and we made some presentations, but most of them we wanted to hear. We had facilitated a group discussion where the community talked to us about the fact, you know, first of all, they educated us that they wanted it to be the Ivy Weaver Cotton Mill site and not the S&amp;W Chemical site, something that we were really glad to hear, and that, and about the site's history, that the community really grew up around Ivy Weaver Cotton Mill. Housing was developed to accommodate the workers, and it was a really self-contained community. You didn't have to go other places in Southwest Hickory, you could be there all on your own. That's changed. So we facilitated that discussion, but we also had hands-on exercises. We had large aerial maps where Clark and I, we sat, we broke out into two tables, and we, as you can see, we're hard at work there, we're two members of the community. So we're drawing out ideas. We want to talk about land use and what should go here, what can go here. And through some of our background research and our discussions with the community, we identified a need for quality rental housing in Hickory as a whole, but especially in Southwest as well and on the west side. We started drawing things out, and we evolved the discussion into, well, how, what should it look like? What scale are we talking about? How should we align transportation? What kind of amenities are here or not here? What are you having to leave your community to access that you would like to access in your neighborhood now? So in terms of identity, we have a lot of longtime residents, people that are multi-generational residents who want to stay and they want to age in place, and with their children that come back if they've left. We also have a lot of newer residents. It's become a very multicultural community. We have a very proud history of what it represents, not just to Hickory and in a community unto itself, but all of North Carolina. And that these sites were really critical to developing that strength of character. But not everything's rosy, as you know. We have a lot, there are a lot of commercial vacancies, we have a lot of sites in disrepair, and then we heard a very strong perception of crime on the streets, that it wasn't safe to be around at times. And so these, certainly not unique to this community, but it is something that we certainly wanted to engage and find solutions for here. This is a quote that we got to get back to where we were. And so part of that is, we're not going to, we don't necessarily wanted to get another mill site, that wasn't the vision, but in terms of vitality and the vibrancy, the street life, and neighbors communicating with each other, I don't want to see people knocking on their doors asking for that cup of sugar. We wanted to engage and provide activities for youth. The Westmont Rec Center and the park down the street, they're great assets, but we could use more. We want it to be self-contained, and we don't want to have to drive everywhere to go get what we need to get, both in terms of retail goods, but also services. I will come back to you in a couple of minutes. Clark is going to talk about the site design and some of the development elements.
Thank you. To help keep us apart, you can call me the OC, which I refer to as the Other Clark. He refers to that as the Older Clark, but that's a whole other discussion. Again, thank you for having us here, and I will try to be brief. The overall strategy, the overall design does attempt to incorporate some of the concerns that we heard from the community, including the need for housing, community green space, retail opportunities, and larger potential commercial uses. You'll see in the overall design that we attempted to create a place. Placemaking is a term everybody hears a lot these days, and our goal with this design is to try to create a place that's unique and identifiable for the Southwest community. In that effort, we created a central element at the corner of First Avenue Southwest, 17th Street Southwest, and then we developed the site separately for, we sort of separated the uses between the sites. So let's see, this is the Southern Desk site. For this site, we visualize the potential for housing and ground-level retail, in particular ground-level retail along First Avenue. And the reasons for this is that creates a vibrant street presence, and that vibrant street presence with the retail is something that helps revitalize the community, it helps create identity, but it also helps putting eyes on the street, which is one way to battle crime in an area, is to have more people. So the ground-level retail is an opportunity along First Avenue, housing above, and then housing behind those units. So we, we had some numbers about projections as far as the overall retail or commercial space. You'll see in your package, we talked the potential for 16,000, 17,000 square feet of retail, ground-level retail, that would be broken up into 1,400 square foot units. Those are just projections, 1,400 is a number used in retail as a good median number. Individual shops can use 1,400, you can combine and make 2,800 or even more if needed. Then there's the potential for the residential, we talked about the residential. There's a real question about whether they're larger units or smaller units, a market study would have to be undertaken to determine what would be the best use as far as residential, whether they're smaller units or larger units. There's parking, try to incorporate parking behind this property off the street. Again, we tried to pull the buildings closer to the street to create that vibrancy and provide ample parking to the back of the, behind those spaces for both the residential and the retail. We also included the potential on 17th Street for a less active, probably more of an office-type commercial use. 17th Street being less traveled, therefore, we felt it was more of a quieter type of commercial space. Moving on to the former Ivy Weaver Cotton Mill site, which was a very interesting discussion. One of the first things we heard in the community meeting was, "I don't like you calling it the Southwest site. We want to call it the Ivy Weaver site." It was, they were very adamant about that, and it was interesting to see. They have a lot of pride in the community, is what Clark and I felt after our meeting. So this site lends itself more to what we felt like was a park or more passive type use for various reasons. One, because of the topography, and two- One, because of the topography, and two, because of the existing, the beautiful existing trees. Of course, we were there in the fall or winter, so you don't see the leaves on the trees, but it is a very beautiful site. So the potential here is for a park, which I'll talk about in a minute, but also a larger commercial-type use that would be closer to Highway 321. Because of the, this is a larger site, you have the potential to subdivide it in this way. This building acts as something of a buffer from Highway 321, so if you were to develop residential or a quiet space in the form of a park, it would provide that type of buffering. That pad is in the neighborhood of 32,000 feet, so you could do a single-story, 32,000 square foot commercial-type facility or potentially a two-story. And we believe that there's the potential for adequate parking for a structure of 66,000 square feet. So the park itself, again, it's more of a passive-type park, it wouldn't include ballfields and that sort of thing. It would become a community asset. This would be the, it would help reflect the pride that the community has for who they are, where they are, where they've been. It has the potential for walking trails, it has the potential for event-type spaces. We include the potential for facilities in the site and parking. We see this as an important element of community pride and something that the community would certainly rally around. Again, we'll talk a little bit about this defining element at the corner of Seventeenth and First. Talking about placemaking and talking about things that make places unique, having a centralized, focused element that incorporates, that is involved in both sites helps to create a true place. This park, this plaza, has the potential to include historical markers, it has the potential to include informational signage, bidges, fountains, things of that nature, all elements that would help define this place as unique and draw people to the site and to demonstrate pride in the community, which is what, which is, again, what we heard from our community meeting. So with that, I'll hand over to Clark and then we can address any questions you might have about my time after the presentation.
All right, now this gets a little bit more boring, but it's kind of meat and potato stuff in terms of what we feel. So what you just saw, you know, we painted a pretty ambitious future for this intersection and for these two particular properties. And at this stage of revitalization plan, we thought it appropriate to take a pretty high-level look at demand and feasibility here. So this is a short list of the types of data, of information that we looked at, there's a much longer list, and all the sources of data available in the appendices of the full report. But we looked at census data to look at income levels and population growth across the three county area, Cattahupi, Caldwell, and Burke Counties. We looked at retail marketplace profile and a marketplace potential, I'll talk a little bit more about what that is, within a one-mile radius of the site. Take a look at that area, see what kind of money is being spent from people inside that area, but outside, in facilities outside of that area. We're looking at housing survey for Cattahupi, Caldwell, and Burke Counties as well, to take a look at housing demand. In general, we know that growth is slow compared regionally in other cities and the statewide average. Hickory as a whole city is growing much slower, but especially in this neighborhood. I think we had a population loss up until 2012 within a one-mile radius of these properties. But it is projected according to our data sources to grow, modest, but growth is good. And we'd like to see that curve go up. So that indicates too, without any housing construction, that housing demand does exist, it's just a question of how much and what housing. Income levels, especially in the direct neighborhood within a one-mile radius, are significantly lower than regional or statewide averages, but especially with about 20% of the population and within a one-mile radius earning less than $15,000 a year, median household income. So these, those are some constraints to develop and that we'll talk about in a moment. So the retail gap analysis, this is always something, there's more information in the back of the report, but this is kind of fun stuff. If you're geeky like I am, it's fun. So this identifies different trade groups and industry groups that were, we have a data provider called Esri, who's also the leading mapping provider that is used by all municipalities across the country, who identifies industry groups and the amount of money. So we looked at a one-mile radius of this intersection and we identified all the money to where there's a positive retail gap, so meaning that there is, say, a million dollars being spent. So we got $214,000 being spent on home furnishing stores. That's coming from within the community, but it's going to other communities. And these are not necessarily signs that if you put a home furnishing store in this neighborhood, that all that $214,000 will be there, nor is it a sign that $214,000 of revenue is enough to support a home furnishing store. But there are some indicators of demand that will fit into some of the recommendations later. And so there, you can see, and there's a longer list in the full report. So this is kind of, this is some of the more interesting data we looked at. For both properties, we feel some overall constraints here are is the market readiness related to population growth and income levels, about near-term implementation. What we provided here conceptually is not something that's going to spring up overnight. So I think here too, an important part of our implementation and recommendations is that the city kind of take a near, mid, and long-term view. That the ultimate build-out would be a long-term view, but there are certainly actions to be proactive and make interventions in this neighborhood that are near-term, that yield midterm results and near-term results that ultimately will cascade into a fuller realization of the plan. Population growth rates are a problem, income levels are low. And so you'll see too, so site control, the former Ivy Weaver Cotton Mill is a constraint. You don't own the site, but we would recommend that you try to work towards that or work in partnership with the current owner. But we know that there have been some discussions where Lade and that you took ownership of the Southern Desk site. And then, of course, at the very bottom, there is the perception of crime in the area and so ways to, with this, some of our recommendations will help alleviate those perceptions. So I break it down, poor site. So for Southern Desk, look for partnerships. We know that people within the immediate neighborhood need some quality rental housing, but we also know that some revitalization to incorporate more commercial, we need some mixed income, we need some higher incomes in the neighborhood to mix with the current income levels. So I think partnerships with different types of developers can help there. We have a big site too, these are really large footprint sites. So, you know, also recommendations of considering staged developments, we'll get into that a little bit. We think it's important to create an incentive package, so the city assemble a list of things that it can help private developers with infrastructure improvements, and we know that working with Raleigh on tax abatements or tax incentives is rough, but we recommend that you try to work in that direction. We've made recommendations, I've made recommendations in other places for the city to kind of provide some rental guarantees for commercial spaces that if a private developer doesn't fit in, find a commercial tenant, that the city has some rent guarantees. There's a myriad of things that we have in here. And we think too, you know, and it might not take hold in the first try with a request for proposals for development. But I think now especially that you have site control, that you assemble something more specific into for requests for proposals, initiate it broadly to the development community, not just locally, looking locally or regionally, but looking statewide and throughout the southeast. And encourage creative thinking on these development teams' parks and challenge them to do things like partner with the city, partner with nonprofits, partner with community groups to help this come true. The fact is that, yeah, we are growing. And the other areas that are growing are becoming more and more expensive, and as that happens, other development interests are going to start looking here closer and closer. Our economy is coming back, housing values and commercial values are going up. And so municipalities that have land like this, especially, there's a lot, there is a lot of private development. We just had a wonderful dinner in Old Mill that we, there's some other, there is investment interest in Hickory. So you tap into that and maybe you have to put it out a couple of times, make some changes and learn from what you're hearing from the development community. I know it's painful, I've had to do that myself, but it's definitely worth it. Continued policing and code enforcement, we heard that in the neighborhood, throughout the residential neighborhood, and even in some of the older commercial properties perhaps, code enforcement has not been what it could be. So we have that perception, we'll have some really nice homes next to some homes with some really poor living conditions. And another thing to consider that with a longer-term vision for full redevelopment is to do something interesting with the site in the interim, even passive greening, making sure that the site is clear and hosting community events, doing something on the site to create activity. It is never, it never ceases to amaze me how a property can sit vacant and nobody wants any part of it, until you start doing something with it. You know, we've been doing assessments or cleanups on Branfield properties and the minute I park a backhoe on it, I'm getting calls. So, oh, the neighbor, oh, we can do something here. So all of a sudden, so just events, passive greening, planting grass across the little thing, a sunflower patch, community gardens. We're working in Wilmington on an interim use, a community garden interim use right now. And there are a host of things that can help activate the site. And like Clark mentioned earlier, when you get people active on a streetscape, crime goes there. Eyes on the street is a tried and true strategy. For former Ivy Weaver, so site control is the first obstacle. So again, we encourage you to try to take site control. We feel that a park here too really adds to this gateway element and placemaking capacity and getting people on the street. And we did hear that there are some public, there are two parks within a mile radius, but I think too that the capacity here for this park to become, create this intersection, this neighborhood as a destination in Southwest, rather than just somewhere people are driving past, really takes hold when you use this as a publicly available green space. Again, continued policing and code enforcement. And you can stage the park development in the near-term, do something wider as you seem, perhaps acquire some state park tip grant funding for a full construction build-out. And two, we think the active programming of activities within this park space really goes a long way for building that sense of pride back and showing interest and providing proof that the city is a strong partner for development teams. For the commercial component of the former Ivy Weaver Cotton Mill site, again, acquire the site in RFP or partner with the developers, partner with the current property owner to initiate an RFP that might not stick right away and talk to other people. We talked a little bit about, this would be a great site for another call center. And also another goal here is to start employing some of the people in the neighborhood that can use it. So again, this is something we're putting a long list of to-dos in Brian Frazier's desk. But he lets us do it, so here we are. So an RFP is one way to get that done and work with a private owner to help make that happen. And continued policing and code enforcement. It's important too, I just want to reiterate the long-term vision, taking near-term steps. So within the report, there are a number of these items were elicited, like this in the near-term, there's a longer list of recommendations that get a little more specific. And we realize that, you know, while the neighborhood, you look at it now and you don't see this, so how is that ever going to come out? And I think that neighborhoods like this in other cities across the country have totally been transformed over the last 20, 30 years. And that perception is a big issue and that's something that, because the city can really help overcome. And that, you know, we're, I don't, you know, Clark and I talked about this earlier, you know, structural determinism, you build it and they will come, isn't a perfect strategy. But I know that in a community like this, if you don't do anything, they won't come. So you need to be very proactive in terms of programming and your investment. So with the park space, I know it's not in the Parks Plan and the needs assessment for 2015 that showed more population growth in Northeast rather than down here, but I just encourage you to revisit that assumption, being proactive to help make sure that the population here is coming back. And to revisit it, I mean, even the needs assessment is 15 years old at this time. And we've had a lot of economic and demographic changes over the last 10 years and it's, and I really encourage you to include this in the plan. And I think that's all I have for you right now.
Thanks, Clark.
Just to end the presentation, the staff does recommend that council accept this revitalization strategy plan for the area so described, and we would be very happy to answer any questions that you may have for us this evening.
As you say, your department has done a fantastic job with the green fields.
Well, thank you, we've got a lot of great support from within city hall and from without and the public, the public-private partnerships work the best and it's been great. We've already spent over 200 grand.
Many long disputes and what I made with the children.
And I just wonder if I had to buy that, our code enforcement division is really what got us to where we're at today, because I recall that was one of the most difficult assignments that they had. And they were able to take that and get it to where we're at today. I understand it was not a thing on the site, but it certainly is a tremendous improvement from where we were, where we had the structure there, and we weren't sure how it was going to get it to where it is today.
It's a great, it's a great reuse site.
And I think the other aspect of that is, we don't have much of anything in that property as far as ownership. We probably, we do some kind of, we had penalties or something like that, we had to pay that particular money.
Yeah, basically, the owner gave it to us, yeah. We did have some funds involved in some of the demo, but not much, most of it was done because he recycled all materials, yeah.
So all of it, you're in good shape on that Southern Desk property.
The only problem that we do face, and I won't get into it because people know my feelings on it, but General Assembly passed a law a couple of years ago that allowed not only demolition in place, but burial of C and D construction and demolition material in place. And that was, that's great for the former or current owner of a site and you're demolishing a building and you dump the demo debris, which is not inspected by anyone at the state or federal level, into a hole. That saves them a lot of money, but the new owner is stuck with getting that stuff out of the hole, which is 10 times more expensive, and we do have quite a bit of site debris for whatever reason that is on that site, something that we will have to work around. Is it an impediment? Yes. Is it a deal killer? Absolutely not. So is the owner of the Ivy Weaver property? I believe Mrs. Whitner still owns the property. Her son-in-law, Byron Yarborough, from the realty executives, has been marketing that property. That property has been on the market since before I came here. They lowered the price slightly. There have been some, some interest, but it's not something that I think, anything that we've seen any kind of interest on both properties, it's not something that we just want to take the first off around, not with all this work that we've done. And, you know, make no small plans, the famous planner once said. And, you know, I think with inspiring spaces and Hickory Bike Choice 2030 and the million dollars of brownfields and another $40 million bond initiative, this is something that we need to take a look at and look at the big picture. We shouldn't have to sell.
In the interim, I'd like to see us do something with it, if it's nothing other than planting grass there or putting trees or something.
I agree, I think that's, I really appreciate the comments about, you know, activating it or trying to create something there, some activity and energy, and I realize that takes effort, money, you know, programming or whatever, but to the extent that there is opportunity for that.
Well, we've recently had a grocer make some inquiries about wanting the site.
Good, good. One thing I do, I do have to comment, or two things, first of all, I'd really like the conclusion of the report we talked about, sort of, if you let the private market do, private sector do it, you're, you know, you're looking at a much longer timeframe and it of course suggested that you do it. Are you planning on doing some RFQs, RFPs?
Well, we would like to with the, you know, permission of council managers.
So that, but that's not really, we're not voting on whether to send out RFQs or RFQs now.
No, no, this is just accepting the plan.
Okay, that's, yeah, all right, good. Well, I mean, what Well, I mean, well, sort of that, I'm a little bit sort of intrigued as possible that residential often hits that railroad, you know, because that's pretty high, relatively high volume rail line.
It threatens it. It's a little noisy.
Yeah, a little bit noisy, so yeah, so, you know, another constraint for the site, but not an ideal killer, so yeah. I'd move to approve the report.
Motion by Leo, second by S, in further discussion. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Next you have. Now this is in an area where a lot of people get over there and get confused about whether they're in Hickory or Longview. As we're making these improvements, I don't want them to get confused. As a sign guy, I always think a sign's first, like you ain't in Longview yet. We don't want any confusion. Okay, appoint Mr. Boards and Commissions.
I have two, Mr. Mayor. I would like to appoint Adrian Dennis to the Public Art Commission. He'll be replacing David Whitney, who was a local representative that had to resign due to work, he's having to travel a lot for work purposes. And also Mr. Joseph R. Gettleman Jr. to the International Council.
I'd like to appoint Belisha Hackett to the Public Housing Authority as the tenant representative. Any other nominations?
Move approval to nomination.
Second. Motion by Leo, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Next you have. Any matters not on the agenda? Any general comments?
I'd just like to make the community for support with so long a stop permit that's passed today, so several sit here at the table, participated one way or another, and several sit on the desk with that in over 10 years, so thanks to everybody surrounding the meeting that's participating.
148 participants, I think this is.
Beautifully drawn.
That takes, of course, for a day, I do.
And Pops concert Sunday night, downtown?
Pops concert, Sunday night.
Back front.
That was another thing that our visitors from Brazil loved, by the way, was the sales and the concert and the camaraderie and the sense of community that we had there.
So my sister's nothing to be hated, they're a little not looking.
They're not trying very hard.
That's true.
It's 100 days of Christmas.
On that note, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out that this will be the last meeting, that Ms. Mandy Pitts is here in her capacity as an employee of the city, spent 17 years, 400 and some odd meetings, I calculate. We're going to miss her, but congratulate her and...
I'll be back in February, ask him if I'm on it.
With our association with the PBA and being the title anyway, the bond issuer of the PBA, we're glad it's going to be in gray hands. And if you were to say, nobody asked me, that's good, but if you were to say, who should, who'd be the best person you could think of for that job? If I had enough time to think about it and I'd given, and I'd have said, well, we could afford to lose it within the city or can we? No, we can't. So I'd probably would not have named her, but other than that, I would have named Mandy State budget, they're getting closer to a negotiated settlement down there. And it looks like, at the present time, it looks like we may not lose any sales tax dollars. And that is good and it has not been without effort and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Yade Fox right here, our registered lobbyist. I know that, that is not a bad term, okay? Yade Fox is the best registered lobbyist anybody has in North Carolina. And she has worked diligently and she fought it, the rest of us to get involved. She even got Zagoroby here today.
There was a golf tournament.
Mr. Gess went and of course, our league of municipalities has been helping us some and our metropolitan mayor's coalition's been helping.
And you've been down there more than once too, Mayor, haven't you?
Well, yeah, but that comes with the territory. Some of that was for those other groups and some was for the city of Hickory and some for Yade Fox.
And golf and grandkids.
Yeah, and golf and the grandkids. We did not play any golf. Tomorrow night, we're going to have a special meeting. We're going to talk about the role that we've taken in the past with respect to Hickory Housing Authority and whether we think there's going to be any change in that role as the housing authority moves forward along with the rest of HUD nationally in setting up a different public housing delivery structure. And we will not be discussing any personnel matters, we will not discuss issues that are being controlled by the present board of the Hickory Housing Authority, but we will talk about our role in the past and how we see it going in the future. Anything else?
Please adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Mason, a senior member of the street. Second by Mr. Leo. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Next you have.